Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Alderman meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Just for the viewing public, we have started about five, six minutes late because we had a couple of public hearings prior to our regular Board of Alderman meeting, which ran late. So, moving right along, are there any additions, deletions, or other modifications to the agenda that anyone would like to make? Seeing none, we will move along. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion is to approve. It's been seconded. Anyone with any changes, questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okey dokey. We are up to the public comment period. Is there anyone present tonight from the public who would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda? And if there is, please, please come right up, Lyle.
Good evening. Lyle Jepson, Executive Director of the Chamber in Economic Development, also Rutland City resident. This is blatant advertising tonight, so I just wanted to come and let you know that once again, the annual Whoopee Pie Festival will be taking place, and it will be taking place on September 13th in downtown Rutland, right on Center Street and Merchants Row and all the way up through here. We're very excited as...
I swear to God, it wasn't me that did that.
Are you all right?
Yes. It was a slow roll.
I'm glad it wasn't me.
The excitement of the Whoopee Pie Festival is infectious. So, we are very much looking forward to showing off a whole lot of stuff this year. We have the real McCoy show coming. We have magicians, character artists, caricature artists, live music, face painting, Come Alive Outside's Green Street again, and lots of vendors, three bouncy houses, a whole lot going on. We've been working very hard to not only make this an exciting event, but one that expands every year. So you can look forward to fifteen, at least fifteen different bakers of different types of whoopee pies that you can get samples for. And I want to remind everybody, it's a free event, but if you want the samples, you got to pay. So please come with some dollars to pay. You can also go online if you would like to preorder so that you don't have to stand in line, and you can just come to our office and pick up your sample tickets. So we have fifteen vendors. We have thirteen other food vendors. We have, I'm going to go down the list, six drink vendors, sixteen so far craft vendors, eleven entertainers, and thirty-five nonprofits that will be participating downtown, as well as ten businesses that say they're going to come out on the street and enjoy everything that's going on. So, it's not going to rain. It hasn't rained in three years. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're very excited about this. I want to thank some people. Some of them are sitting right here, like DPW. We couldn't do this without the help of DPW, so thank you very much, especially after we roll up the Green Street and you pull out that really nice street sweeper, so we appreciate that. They also are on call when we need electricity downtown. They've already walked around with Crispin, so we thank them for their help. Want to thank Come Alive Outside, Rutland Rec, Wonderfeet Kids Museum, and you folks who help support this and allow us to shut down the streets and really have a good time here in Rutland. We have added a couple new things, one of which is a mile run, and people will sign up, and because it is a whoopee pie festival, you need to run half a mile, eat a whoopee pie, and run back, and we'll see who makes it back after that. There's also a whoopee pie eating contest, which I have fought not to do for the last three years, but apparently this year we are doing a whoopee pie eating contest, and it will be for children, teens, and adults. You will get a memorabilia bucket when you leave, in case you need the bucket. So, would invite you to the Whoopi Pie Festival on Saturday, September 13th. It's going to be very exciting. Again, I want to thank you folks for your support. I think it brings a lot of people downtown. Last year, about seventy-five hundred people came downtown, and it was a great event. So we look forward to it again. I'll open up for any questions if I have not adequately...
So, does anyone have any questions on the Whoopi Pie Festival, which has been a tremendous event the last couple of years in the city of Rutland?
I'm awaiting Kiana's question, because I haven't answered.
Well, there we go.
Kiana generally asks, are you going to clean up afterwards? Thank you for asking that question of everyone who stands up here, and I've watched. So we will, in addition to the trash cans that are downtown, we have twenty additional trash cans, ten recycling trash cans, which always end up being garbage, and then ten composting, which people don't know what to do with, so they all become garbage cans, quite frankly. And we'll make sure that, I think, we have some Boy Scouts coming. Thank you, Mr. Gillum. And we have the Rutland Area Robotics, who will be sweeping through the downtown after the event.
Nice. Good.
That's fantastic. Do you have a question out there?
Yes, I was just going to ask you, do you have enough volunteers and who would like to...
Judy's a plant, and so you can go online, and you can sign up for Judy's volunteer list, which is online at rutlandvermont.com/whoopee pie fest.
Okay. I think that just about does it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay. I think Karen, if you would like to go next, you certainly may. I understand you want to sit for your, to speak, and so the floor is yours.
Before I get to what I came for, when Lardwell had our fire, we didn't have a go. All kinds of people responded. It's always handled beautifully. It takes five or six hours for us to get back in because of sprinklers and alarm systems, et cetera. There were two ladies from the materials office that went through City Hall to find every folding chair they could find and took it outside so people could sit down, and I thought that that really needed to be recognized. It was above and beyond, and it's what makes small town life really, really nice.
That's really nice of you to say that. Thanks.
And David, seven or eight years ago, when we had the pizza box fire late in the afternoon, about to rain, you and your wife rushed downtown and got us all inside before we got wet. So, thank you.
Go on.
Okay. I'd like two things first about the change to the littering ordinance. Last time I heard, it would be legal, and it was expected to get out of legal by the end of the first week in August. Can somebody just give me a thumbnail update where that is?
Alderman McClure.
Just looking at our meeting minutes from the previous meeting, it looks like this motion was made and seconded with nine yes and one no. So that, I yield then back over to the clerk. Where do we stand with that now that it's been voted on?
Is this about the...
The littering ordinance, the...
Feeding?
Yes, the feeding, yeah.
It goes into effect August 29th.
It goes into effect August 29th?
Correct.
Thank you.
Read the paper, Austin.
Okay. I don't always read the paper, so thank you. So the next question is not meant to be smart, but will there be enforcement? It will be enforced. Okay. I just want to repeat that it seems to be the common wisdom that it's all one person. It is not. It's a number of people, and it's some random people as well. I've contacted a couple of nonprofits who are willing to partner with me to help get the word out to their clientele, trying to make that easier. Just an aside, I've been trying to deal with Brixmore to get bait stations in the hedge, and I've been given the yeah, yeah, yeah three times in six weeks. So I called, and I spoke to Jason today, and I got the same answer, so I asked when, and he reacted. So he hasn't called their exterminator. But he let me know that the city is talking to Brixmore about taking the hedge out, and I can understand why. But if you take that hedge out before you eradicate the rodents that are living in there, they're going to scramble. I stopped at Edward Jones today and just briefly talked to Mary, who's filling in for the admin, and she said she was locking up last week, turned around and ran out of the hedge, across the street towards her, cut down the alley into the park, the alley between Bardwell and the service building into the park. So you've got one restaurant, seventy-five units of housing, and then maybe nine more off that other alley behind the fence. That's where those rats and mice are going to go when you pull that hedge out. They need to be eradicated first. So, can we all agree on that?
I think anybody, I think, is most amenable to that.
Okay. I don't want to be graphic, but I grew up outside a small town. My friends had farms, and if you've ever been around, when they tip over a pigsty, the rats go scramble.
Okay. Anything else, Karen?
No, just that Jason gave me an excuse. He seems to be having trouble managing his workload. Instead of one woman saying the same thing three times, it's always more effective to have two or three people saying the same thing. So if someone from the city could follow up with Jason at Brixmore, I can give you his contact information, and please, please stress to get bait stations in that hedge.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else? If not, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty. Next up is Communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus, welcome. Floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll try to speak quickly. I know we're running a little bit late. So first off, on your desks, we have a nomination for Planning Commission for Claire Purcell. I ask that, please, as customary, that the board tables these nominations into the desk.
Alderman Talbot.
Motion to table the nomination of Claire Purcell to the Planning Commission until our September 2nd meeting.
Second.
All righty. Motion tabled, been made, and seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you. I did want to touch on the city attorney situation quickly. We did receive our RFPs at the Board of Finance responses this week, so we're going to be reviewing those. I have spoken to the board president as well, kind of about our preferences and how we want to go forward. So we're also in conjunction with that going to double the efforts to actually search for dedicated attorney attorneys, so we can compare both options side by side as we move forward. I just wanted to give everybody update on that. Summer at City Hall is probably our busiest season from an activity standpoint, so over the next few Alderman meetings, I'm going to be doing a couple of different shout-outs and thanks. We had National Night Out just a little while ago, and I wanted to give a big thanks to the PD and Fire, but also to the Rec Department. You know, the Rec Department's kind of the foundation of National Night Out. They have a ton of effort that goes into that every day, leading up to it, including the actual setup and breakdown, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of those groups for doing that work. Also, with the conclusion of the city band concerts in the Seven to Sunset, it was a great summer. I only made it to one, sadly. I wish I was able to go to more, but it was awesome to see the crowds back at the park and around the gazebo, and with all the work that's gone into that, and to see the, you know, attention to detail and the work we found out in our department head meeting today is continuing to finish up the pillars and the roof, or the ceiling, I apologize. Very excited to see that space being used again. It was all done, you know, and it worked out really well with Art in the Park as well. Another topic I'd like to bring up, so, last week, I was contacted by Judy Delpha, and in conjunction with Jessica Barlow, who are both here this evening. America is celebrating their 250th birthday next year. Rutland City has not had fireworks for the past few years for a couple of different reasons, and Judy asked me if we had any celebrations planned, and I said, well, what are you thinking? So she had come to me with a couple of ideas, but they're early stages and not fully formulated yet, so what I would like to do on my side, and what I'd like to do with the board, is first off, I'd like to refer to committee, Rutland's version of the America 250 celebration for discussion. We'll start with that.
Okay. Yeah. Alderman Talbot.
So I'll make a motion to refer that to General Committee?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made to General, and it's been seconded. Anyone have anything on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Great. And then a second piece is, we're going to put together, because there's only eleven months left between now and July 4th, we're going to put together a commission quickly, and we'd love to have a couple of board members on that commission, and I'll ask the board president to assign some, to start working on a plan. Now, we were asked about funding the fireworks. We've had that discussion before. We know that the city can't fully fund it, but I think there may be a way for us to put some money in, as well as some fundraising, so we're going to start having those discussions right now, very soon, within the next few weeks, and hopefully we'll have a plan, but I'd like, that's why I wanted to get it in committee quickly, so that we can have the board's perspective on what we should do as a whole. Any comments or questions on that?
Anyone?
Would either of you like to say anything before I continue? Judy?
Well, we certainly appreciate you approaching the mayor on that. I think it's a tremendous idea, and I think some of us have been kind of talking about it unofficially, you know, what are we going to do? It's, well, it comes once in a lifetime, right? Or not even a lifetime, so go ahead.
And I am not a plant, as Mr. Jepson said I was. We just happen to be here tonight. When I was working, I kind of filled in down at the Chamber and at the Hub Co. Works, and I was there for two Fourth of Julys, and the hardest thing I had to do was say, no, we don't have fireworks in the city. It was, it was difficult, especially when you see a little town like Polley putting on such an array, and it's really for New York and not really for Vermont, because those are all the cars you see over there. But I think my friend here, Jessica, she was a classmate of my son's, and...
The class of ninety, ninety-two, were some of the greatest kids I ever met, and we would like to do this. And myself, I'm ready to put in a thousand dollars towards this.
Oh, wow.
And anyone else that would like to?
I would as well.
Jessica Copla. I live at Six Shepherd Lane in Rutland.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Been a resident here all my life. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption, but...
Not at all.
So, and thank you for listening to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your endeavors. We appreciate it.
Yeah. We certainly do appreciate it. Thank you. Alderman Gillum, you have something?
And I have a suggestion, and it might be shot from my fellow...
Rotarians.
Selectmen from Rutland Town. I think we need to invite Rutland Town to join us on this 250th anniversary. I think if the two towns could come together and do this project, we could do a lot more fireworks, because they have a budget for fireworks. So between the business people, ourselves, and Rutland Town, and others, I think we can pull something off to do a good fireworks. I'm just suggesting that maybe we should put that in intermunicipal committee and let Mr. Clifford invite the town to a meeting.
Add a motion?
Add his motion.
All righty. So a second? All righty. Motion's been made and seconded. Any debate? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just clarification on what committee that was, and I didn't...
Intermunicipal.
Intermunicipal, okay.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion passes.
Great.
Yeah, intermunicipal.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gillum, and thank you both for coming and speaking, and we appreciate the motivations for you doing this. That's awesome. So we'll have those discussions quickly, try to get things moving, because like I said, we have less than twelve months to get this plan. You know, just to talk about the cost of fireworks and what we're looking for, you know, it used to be, you know, around fifteen and twenty. It's looking a little bit more expensive right now. I do want to bring up the fact that typically, the fair has hosted, the Fairgrounds from agricultural has hosted for us. I did happen to have a conversation with the president, Robert, during the fair on Friday about doing this. I know that we've approached, and Robert said he'd be more than happy to host the fireworks again. So we can absolutely work with the fair to get that done, so very excited about that.
And if I could just chime in, as a director of the, down there at the fair, we've had, you know, a couple of discussions about the fireworks and lack thereof and that sort of thing. What, one suggestion was made, and I think it was from Tony Romeo, who's been involved with fireworks, is that, especially because it's the 250th anniversary, depending on when we plan to have it, is to book early, because if we want some professionals to actually do it, which I think we do need, they're going to get booked up quick.
They are.
So I think speed is of the essence in this instance.
That's right. And it's also going to be the 180th anniversary of Vermont State Fair, so it'll be nice to combine those two things perhaps and do a big celebration.
Good.
Thank you very much on that. And then, any other questions before I move on? All right. I have one more thing.
Yep.
This is something that I've been thinking about for some time. I think we need to start discussing it perhaps, you know, after about two and a half years in City Hall. What I noticed that is different about our municipality from others is kind of consistency in policy, or consistency in process, or documentation, or these other things, and, you know, when I talk to my peers throughout the state and what do they do, most of them have a city manager that helps manage and maintain most of those things. Now, I know a lot of that role falls to the mayor right now, but I do think it's worth having the discussion to see if it's time, now with Rutland with its size and the way that it operates, to look into adding a city manager or having a city manager for Rutland City. You know, like I said, early stages, but I'd like to send that discussion to the committee of your choosing.
Anyone? Alderman McClure.
Referral to General.
Motion has been made to refer to General. It's been seconded. Any debate?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
So, if I'm understanding, possibly adding a position, so usually, as we know, we either have a strong mayoral position, or we have a city manager. We don't have both.
That's right. So it would be up for discussion to see what would work, so if you look at...
Because it changes the role of this board as well.
That's right.
Because this board becomes, has more power under a city manager.
It has the potential to. If you look, there are a few cities, even outside of Vermont, where they have both, a mayor, you know, powerful mayor, and an operations manager, so to speak.
Sometimes the mayor is just ceremonial.
And there's also cities that have ceremonial mayors. Absolutely right. So the purpose of the discussion is to figure out perhaps which, if we'd like to do this, which form we'd like to do it under.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Great. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
President?
Yes.
Can I ask a question of the mayor while he's...
You certainly may.
I'd like to let the last meeting, or brought up the fact again, that we haven't heard from JCI, and that was one of the most, we're supposed to hear from them once in a while.
Yes.
Is there any way you could get that to them, that request?
Yes. Absolutely. Great point, Paul. After that meeting, sorry, Alderman Clifford, a very first-name kind of guy, after that meeting, Alderman Taddeo did reach out to JCI. I believe it was either that evening or the next morning. They did respond. Vic is actually moving on, I'm sorry, Dean is actually moving on to a new position, so Vic is going to handle those updates, and he's going to come in and give us an update at some point here soon. I'm going to try to get that scheduled, I'm going to try to schedule that this week for either the next meeting or the one after, but ASAP. So, on top of it. Thank you very much.
I think we got a follow-up on that.
I just wanted to say, because that was my motion back in April.
Yeah. Right. Understood. And, you know, they, just to respond, they really did just begin work about four weeks ago, so it is time for an update, and I'll make sure it gets taken care of. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Okey dokey. So we're moving on. There's no special events permits. Reports and letters from department heads and officials. Looks like Engineer Gillen is first with an issue Connor Park, Connor, Monsignor Connor Park, CSO Storage. We will start there.
I think I have something from here in a minute.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Connor Park Combined Sewer Overflow Storage Project, been in the works for quite some time. The construction documents are nearing completion, which is very exciting. It's, you know, it's designed to be somewhere between half a million gallons of storage capacity, up to 750,000 gallons of storage capacity, depending on how bid pricing comes out, of course. So we're on schedule to bid this project very soon for construction of next year. As a reminder, this is the project that's going to be funded by the CSO ARPA grant that Public Works was awarded a few years ago. We were awarded that money with our eye on this type of project. I've got two funding applications, a step-two funding application to start, which was previously approved by the board. There was administrative error, which I researched a little bit, and the evidence leads me to believe that it's my fault, so I'm asking you guys to sign it again, so I can resubmit it. And then the second one is a step-three funding application for construction. Typically, we submit these in advance of bids, and then, depending on what the bid pricing is, we'll come back with an amendment. But right now, the step-three is for in excess of $7 million, which covers the estimated cost for construction, including onsite engineering, et cetera. We are expecting it to come in worse than that at this time.
Okay. Let's take them one at a time. So the step-two funding application you're requesting to have it circulated for signatures, would that be...
That's correct.
Correct. So a motion to suspend the rules would be in order?
Second.
All righty. Motion to suspend has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And a motion to circulate for signatures.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any debate on that? Any questions for our guests? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, step-three, you are looking for a request to...
Circulate for signatures.
The same thing.
Move to suspend the rules.
Okay. Motion is to suspend and take it up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Move to step-three, relative, determine how long it needs to be.
Yeah. Make a motion to circulate for signatures, the Clean Water State revolving fund loan applicant, step-three loan application for Connor Park CSO Storage Project.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. They will get the correct information for the minutes after the meeting. So, any questions on that? Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
If I may, make one additional request.
You certainly may. You may.
Entertain a motion to have Robert Protovansky and Ted Gillen continue as authorized representatives for the Connor Park CSO Storage Project with respect to Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Second.
All righty. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And have the, the assistant engineer and the city chief of Department of Public Works to...
Remove whatever he said.
I'm trying to repeat it in my own words. Not doing a very good job, but you guys get the message. The motion has been made and seconded. Any debate on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All righty, next up is Planning Director Bove. Amendment number three to real estate...
Commissioner Protovansky.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Protovansky.
Oh, Commissioner Protovansky, Legislative Tours. I skipped right over you. How dare I?
Thought I made a mistake. Just a quick FYI, the first week of September, we're hosting the local delegation to Montpelier for tours of the water and wastewater plants. Talk about the issues we face, and try to give them a general understanding of what, what's going on, and try to help them if anything should come up, up in Montpelier. So, if anybody wants to join us, get ahold of me, and let you know at day and time.
So, that week is Labor Day week, so that would be Tuesday through Friday?
Yeah. I've got pretty good response so far for, I think.
Yeah, yeah, good. Alderman Gillen?
For the, for the board members who haven't been at those two facilities, I strongly suggest that you go, so when we do talk about these things, you know what we're talking about, and the locations where they are, and the type of work that we have to do at those locations to maintain what we have.
Bless you.
Absolutely. I agree.
Good conversation to have with budget season coming too soon.
Good. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
God bless you.
Now, we can move on to Ed Bove. Planning Director Bove, again, amendment number three to the real estate option agreement.
Talk about zoning now? No, I'm just kidding.
Go ahead.
And Sean, BRA directors, I guess we're part, partners in crime for this one. So, I think we're looking for an extension of the purchase and sale, is that what it is?
Two hundred and Columbia.
For 200 Columbia Avenue, between the city and Cornerstone. They are still putting the project together, they're still working on financing, and I think that purchase and sales were one year in duration, so we're asking for another year. I think through...
They're actually asking for six months.
Thank you. Six months.
Yeah. They don't anticipate another one, which is why they're only asking six months this time, so it's a matter of like gap in funding, they feel pretty confident in dealing over the next, or to the end of the year, yeah.
So, the year is up right about now?
June, it looks like June 30.
Yeah, technically, one past.
Or a past.
Looks like June 30.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we need to...
Okay, so a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Move to extend...
December 31st.
December?
Through December 31st.
December 31st.
Extension of the purchase and sale agreement through December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Anyone inside the rail have anything on that? Mayor Duncess?
You just made one of the motions to authorize the... Oh, yes.
Okay, well, I think that's a friendly amendment. We'll add that on to...
You want that amended or suspend the rules?
I'm sorry?
You need that, suspend the rules to add that on, or we just amend it?
No, you can just amend it.
So moved.
Second.
It's a friendly amendment.
I agree with you.
We don't need to vote on that separately. It's a friendly amendment. All righty, so everybody understand what we're voting on? All righty, seeing no further debate. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Well, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Reports of standing committees. Alderman Donahue, Community and Economic Development.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
The committee met, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee on August 7th, 2025, with the following topics on the agenda: Parking Garage Leases and Management Contract, Rutland City Marketing Revolving Loan Fund, RLF, the World War II Memorial, and Blighted Properties. The Community and Economic Development Committee of the Rutland City Board of Aldermen met at 5:30 in LaMontagne Meeting Room in City Hall. Committee members were present, including Chair Donahue, Vice Chair Davis, and Alderman Gillen, Alderwoman McClure, joined by phone, and a quorum was present and voting. Also in attendance, Alderman Board President David Alair, Alderman Coopley, Alderman Clifford, and Alderman Talbot were all in attendance as well. City officials included Mayor Duncess, Rutland City Planning Director Ed Bove, Police Chief Brian Pillcullen, the Rutland City Police Department Outreach Commander Matt Proudy, April Chaffee, Acting Superintendent of Recreation and Parks, and Mary Markowski, City Treasurer. Additionally, other officials included Sean Atkins, Executive Director of the Rutland Redevelopment Authority, as well as Barbara Spalding, Director of Grants and Outreach for the Rutland RRA, Mary Cohen, CEO of Cornerstone Housing Partners, and Melanie Paskovich, Cornerstone's Chief Marketing, or Chief Program Officer, I should say. And then two representatives from Laz Parking, and Jade McClellan, Director of MBR TD, The Bus. My next sentence there is redundant, so I'll skip that. Members of the media included Rutland City Reporter Gordon Ristillo of the Rutland Herald. So, about 22 people, Mr. Chairman, attended. It was a robust committee meeting. We opened at 5:30 and started with the mayor's item on Parking Garage Leases and Management Contract. Chair Donahue turned the presentation over to Mayor Duncess, who discussed the current status of the deck leases, and floated the idea of a master lease with the organizers and the department, oops, wait a second, jumping ahead, with the state, including the first floor, to get a sense of the board's interest before pursuing the concept further. This was reported in the Rutland Herald subsequently. You may have read it. At the conclusion of a robust discussion of the topic, it was indicated by the committee and all eight board members present that we believe the idea has merit. The mayor received the input and feedback he was seeking, so no vote was necessary at this time. It was noted that the transit center leases for floors 2, 3, and 4 between the state and city were expired. The ground floor lease with the state and the bus was expired, and the management agreement with the city and Laz Parking, again, floors 2, 3, and 4, was also expired. Side note is that the bus has moved back into the transit center effective on Monday. On that item, that concludes that item for the moment. It will remain in committee, and the mayor will pursue his discussions and can come back to the committee when he's prepared, ready. Item number two, Rutland City Marketing Revolving Loan Fund, Melanie Paskovich and Mary Cohen of Cornerstone Housing Partners, to discuss the rental housing revolving loan fund and the fact that the fund is underutilized for permits, repair, and rehab. It was suggested by attending Alderman Talbot that we consider allocating an amount of the available dollars, in parentheses, possibly equal to one unit or up to $30,000 as an example, but we would look to the IRA to make a recommendation to market the program and increase interest in applying for these loans. The loan applications are processed by Cornerstone Housing Partners, then recommended to the IRA for consideration, with a final approval by the Board of Aldermen. Parenthetically speaking, the fund currently has $335,386 available, originally funded in 2024 at $400,000 through the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA dollars. It remains an attractive interest rate of one and a half percent. For now, no changes in administration were recommended by the committee, but the committee agreed to the merits of identifying funds for marketing. Without a specific proposal yet, the committee took no action at this time. Item number three, World War II Memorial. April Chaffee suggested the World War II Memorial could be placed on the south end of Main Street Park, in the space between the Veterans, Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and the monument to Major General Clarence R. Edwards. A location is consistent with the opinion of organizers Tony Romeo and Tom Giffen, and the committee was also supportive. Recreation Department will consult the city forest or an arborist, as there is a small tree planting that may have to be moved about that middle section between those two currently existing memorials, or recognition in one case, a memorial in the other. That is approximately adjacent to where Clifford Funeral Home is for those keeping track. A future site visit will be arranged, and Alderman Gillen also mentioned that the current interest from the organizers is in having it made from granite, not marble. The initiative will remain in committee, so we can act on the proposal when organizers and the department are ready. No other action was necessary at this juncture. And regarding item four, blighted properties, Chair Donahue discussed the current ordinances regarding blighted properties under Title IX Buildings, Chapter 16 Vacant Buildings, Letter A Blighted Structures. Also, Letter D, which is public nuisance, and Chair Donahue also referenced Chapter 11 Housing Standards, subsection 1310 Exterior Property Areas, Letter D Weeds. The discussion centered around the lack of ordinances around occupied, occupied housing in regard to blight and exterior property. There was reference to the issue also being in Charter and Ordinance Committee, and Alderman Talbot also suggested the city explore a gradually increasing tax rate for vacant properties that are blighted. Chair Donahue indicated that the committee report will be informational only with no formal actions taken, and that all items will remain in committee to continue to be addressed. Alderwoman Davis moved to adjourn, seconded by Alderman, Alderwoman Gillen.
There's a typo there.
Mr. Chairman, Alder...
I don't think I changed anything.
...Gillen. And the motion passed, and the meeting concluded at 6:26 PM, respectfully submitted to the Community and Economic Development Committee Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Alderman Donahue on his report? It looks like we're all set.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, Alderwoman Davis.
I'm not sure if we resolved it in committee with the two recommendations from Alderman Talbot of money, so I'm hopeful that the IRA is going to have that discussion and report back to us. And then the second one about taxation on unkept, purposely, I guess, I'll say, unkept properties. Is that going to stay in community development and have that discussion there? Do we anticipate?
Yeah, so my thought on that was because they weren't specifically put in committee to that extent, that those should be additional motions referring them into committee to be more specific.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to refer exploring a gradually increasing property tax rate for blighted vacant properties to community and economic, or to charter and ordinance. What do you think is most appropriate?
Either one's fine with me.
I guess to charter and ordinance then.
Second.
Okay, so the referral is to charter and ordinance right now, and it's been seconded. Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
And the, on the marketing fund, did we feel that you are going to make a recommendation back to us, or do you want us to refer that?
Sorry, Mr. President. This was about the...
Right.
...city, you are going to have the simple process.
It is? Oh, okay, all right.
So, it's under discussion.
In good hands.
And he's right here.
Right, as long as it's there somewhere, landed somewhere.
Cool, okay, great.
Thank you, Alderwoman Davis.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, so, moving along, we do not have any select committees. Any representatives tonight? Let, no petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication? Board of Control Commissioners, nothing, but we do have one item here under Board of Cannabis Commissions.
I'll move to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissions.
Second.
All righty, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And it is Mountain Exotics LLC Renewal of Their Indoor Cultivator Two-Tier. I guess you'll find that on page six of your documents tonight. What's your pleasure? Alderwoman McClure?
Motion to move for approval for the license renewal for Mountain Exotics LLC.
Okay, all righty, motion's been made and seconded to approve the request. Any debate on that? And Alderman Donahue?
Yeah, is that, is anyone here from Mountain Exotics, may I ask?
Is there anyone here tonight from Mountain Exotics? Seeing none.
Only because I had just a question on the location, because it's, on the state website, it indicates that the license expires apparently, offering a November 27th of '25, and it's indicating it being in Morristown. I'm assuming it's somewhere along the way between the time it was approved, and now they've, if I have it right, moved to Rutland. And it indicates 211 Columbia Avenue. I just kind of wanted to confirm that that was actually on 211 Columbia Avenue. I kind of drove over there today and didn't see the location. And then...
Yeah.
For the principal, it's indicated that the business address, at least what I was able to research online, is showing 10 Sheldon Place. So, I wanted to make sure we knew exactly where this was located and doing business currently.
So, I got a nod from the city clerk that is indeed at 211 Columbia Avenue, as far as she knows, so that's a yes for that.
And I was just...
Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think with the cultivator, that the hope is that you, you don't see them, right? That they're invisible.
Did I help you answer your question?
And I don't know whether it has to be changed in some way on the, on the state permit that's showing them in Morristown currently, or why they're showing them in Morristown. It's not showing it located in Rutland.
Maybe the clerk can just take a look at it.
I can check with the Vermont Cannabis Board.
And I would like to sort of approve it with the understanding that we know it's at 211 Columbia Avenue.
It is. It's like, almost across from the first GE. It's that plain gray building.
Thanks.
Okay, so again, the motion is to approve, and it's been seconded, seeing no further debate. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, motion to go out of the Cannabis Commissioners. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're on to unfinished business. Looks like we have a couple of entries here from Alderwoman Savage under unfinished business, so why don't we start with the first one? It says Charter and Ordinance Committee Meeting of June 30th, 2025. Go ahead.
Yes, I would, I think the procedure is to move to suspend the rules and untable and take a, for vote again, the suggested language for the modification of the fire ordinance, Fire Alarm Ordinance Section, which would be new 2808. This will require unanimous approval by the board, but this is very important to be passed so that, you know, our, our fire chief and, and everybody, they only have four keys, so they can go in and turn off and the alarms, and, and be able to go in and evaluate everything, instead of having a two-pound chain of keys that can get lost, and, like he said, has exploded on before and ended up in a snowbank, and, and taking great time to, you know, prevent him from doing what needs to be done.
Okay, why don't we get some motions on the floor, and then we'll get right into the debate. Alderwoman McClure?
This is just a little bit of clarification for anybody watching at home. Alderwoman Savage did a great job with the overview, but very specifically, this is in regards to Knox boxes. Knox boxes are little boxes that go on the outside of your commercial building where those universal keys that the fire department has access to are located in the case of an emergency. They came in quite handy during the Bardwell House fire, after talking to, or Fire Alarm last week, after talking to a couple of our firefighters afterwards, and I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that that was the item of discussion, was the Knox boxes.
Okay, so the motion was, the move, the whole thing was tabled, correct?
It was.
So, we need to untable it.
We'll move to, I'll move to remove from the table.
Thank you. All right, motion's been made to remove from the table, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so, I'm not sure if we need to suspend the rules again. I don't believe we do.
No, okay.
We need to, you need, you're looking for a motion to...
Just need a motion.
Motion to approve the language of the ordinance from Attorney Bluber for modification of the fire alarm ordinance, section 2808. Is that correct?
Second.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Now, we have any questions or debate on that? Yes, Alderman Donahue.
I'll pass to Alderman Savage.
Yes.
I will say this brings us up to federal rules and regulations as well. So federally we are, we need to move to this sort of lockbox, and we are not in, within federal regulations right now, yeah.
Yeah, understood. All right. Anyone else? Alderman Gillum.
Just so people know, at home, this is a life-saving thing. I worked for a couple of businesses that had lockboxes outside their business, and they would be calling me at 2:00 in the morning looking for keys. This eliminates all that. The fire department can get access immediately into these facilities, and it's also going to save property at the same time. So this is definitely a good move for the city to do.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else? Yeah?
I just wanted to get an understanding of the implementation timeline for completion of it.
Alderman McClure.
I believe as it was discussed in committee, as it comes time for these Knox boxes to be replaced, they will be gradually rolled out to be in compliance. That was something that Chief Lovett made us aware of during the meeting where we had all voted to send this here.
So that's, I think that's on the record for tonight, so we know what the rollout of it is.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. That was unanimous. Okay, so you have a second issue here? Go right ahead.
Yep, I'd probably like, I'd both come up and speak, so we have another item that was tabled, and that is the land use stock, which was part of what was-
Okay.
Thank you again.
Go ahead, Mr. Bulb.
So we had the public hearing earlier, so there's a couple options. We can have another hearing in the future, or not. We can make changes to the document, or not. So I think President O'Leary, you'd mentioned there was going to be another hearing. It was closed and not recessed, which means we would have to warn it again, which is fine, but we can decide on that first, and then some of the other intricacies.
Excuse the language. I was reacting to the comments that we heard from the public, and just the feeling I was getting in the room, that it felt like it was just not ready for prime time. So that's just me personally. Alderman Davis.
I'd like to refer it back to charter and ordinance, to have some of those discussions that we heard at the public hearing tonight. I think it would be helpful, I mean, most of us, I assume, just got it recently and had a chance to look through it. I have a couple of questions. I'd like to see the map in detail. Maybe others have, shame on me if I haven't, but I'd like to see the map in detail. And then I'd like to talk about, I don't, I understand the mixed residential intent for Loretta Home. I don't know if there's any safeguards, I guess, I can all use to put in place to see if it's supported by the neighbors. I also have some question about neighborhood business. So I think I would like to send it back and have those discussions, and make sure that we as a board are comfortable with the document, and then have another public hearing.
Okay, so that's what I was looking for, was the second. So there is a motion to refer the issue to charter and ordinance. It's been seconded. Debate? Anyone on that? Particular motion? You have something?
Yeah, just a-
Go ahead. Alderman Clifford?
Would it be possible to invite a few of those people that spoke tonight to the meeting? Because I think they're, one of their concerns was communication or lack of. So I just didn't know if that would be a good thing or not.
Alderman Davis?
And I think, I think we as a board need an opportunity to understand that document pretty clearly. The woman that spoke about setbacks, that concerns me. I think we all feel like our residential neighborhoods are our tax base. You know, that's where we get our revenue from. And everybody's home, no matter what it is, is their place of heaven, so to speak. So I don't know that that's changed. If it has, we need to discuss that. If it hasn't, then, you know, we'll go for dinner.
So I am a little reluctant to get into a continuous discussion about the document itself right here. I will certainly entertain that, but it's a pretty lengthy document. I would like to stick to what the motion is, and the motion is to refer it back to charter and ordinance. So anyone else inside? Okay, Mayor Dungeons.
Just real quick, actually, Alderman Clifford's request, I was thinking of the same thing, so I haven't captured the contact information with people that spoke this evening, so we should be able to-
Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just comment on the couple points that were made, so this board can think about that between now and the committee meeting?
Go right ahead.
Because I think they're important. So it was, the only change to the map was the four properties on Meadow Street going from the Park District to the MR1 District. And those are the ones on the west side of the street, including Loretta Home. And there are no applications or anything that's been submitted regarding Loretta Home right now, but like I said earlier, whether it's transitional housing or market rate, it's still non-conforming. So any development for that property is going to need a change in the zoning district. So just have that there as well. The comment about the too many districts is true, and the reason we didn't touch that for this update was because we are about to work on the municipal plan, and we have to do a new future land use map. So rather than getting into changing the districts at this point, because again, we're using the document we have in place now with tweaks, we were going to hold that for a future update of the zoning. But that is a great point about the number of districts. The setbacks in the single residential, in the single-family residential, all of that is required by state statute to allow five units per acre and a permitted review for up to four units. That's state statute. That is not something that we put in because it emerged from the public or the planning commission. With that, we cannot treat multifamily housing different than single-family residences. Again, that came out of Act 47 and Act 181 of last year. So that's something that we just have to deal with. The setbacks were reduced slightly, and again, to encourage more housing. So for example, the front was reduced from 25 to 20 feet, side from 15 to 10, and we currently have this weird rear setback, which is hard to interpret in the zoning. It's either 20% of the lot, or a minimum of 20, or a maximum of 50. So we had set that at 15 feet. So that's something, again, we can determine what we want to do with that. But that, so, but the underlying point of that is the units per acre and the density, that's required by state statute.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's just something that needs to be explained, you know, or just so there's that awareness, I guess, so to speak.
And then just a final point, is we did have a planning commission public hearing, we had a charter and ordinance committee meeting, and a planning, and a Board of Aldermen meeting tonight. So there has been notice, and it has been warned according to statute. So I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think we understand that. It's just sometimes it's difficult to get that information to the people that it's going to be affected to directly. But we will attempt to do that in the next couple of weeks.
And with that, I had sent around the reformatted version to the Board of Aldermen that you had seen. That is going to be the version that, again, it's substantially the same as the one that's now, but that's going to be the version I'd like to use at the Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting.
Okay, good, thank you. So the motion is to refer to charter and ordinance, it's been seconded. Any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Okay, all right, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of everything from you, Alderman Savage, I believe. So we're on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. You will see a, something with my name on it, resolution regarding proposed federal Medicaid cuts and Vermont healthcare crisis. This was an email that was sent to the board from the mayor, requesting the board to consider this resolution. I gave it some thought. As most of you know, I am generally in favor of cutting budgets and being careful with the dollars, and in this case, I am also. But I am very, very concerned about what any possible serious Medicaid funding cuts could do to the Rutland Regional Medical Center and to our medical facility here in town. And so that's why I have put it on the, on our agenda here for the board's consideration, to do it as they see fit. So having said that, I will open it up. Alderman Davis.
So I just, I read it. I work in healthcare, as people know, and I think all of us feel strongly that those who need should obtain Medicaid benefits for healthcare, and to fund whatever is necessary for healthcare. But I don't know enough about the impact that it's having in this community. And I think it would be beneficial to have input from Rutland Regional Medical Center, to have input from CHICHER or other entities that serve the Medicaid public, to give us some kind of guidance. Because I understand what the document is saying, but it's a federal document. We're at a local level, and I don't feel that any of us probably have that knowledge base. It's a document that we can get behind in the sense that we don't want to see people without appropriate coverage, but I don't know what that coverage is. We also know, in the state of Vermont, we all read it, there is Medicaid fraud. I don't know how to address that as well. We've talked about how this impacts, how Medicaid impacts folks coming from outside of the state, because Medicaid benefits are so easy to obtain. What impact is that having on the city as a whole with homelessness, because folks are coming to get easy benefits? I'm just not sure that I'm ready at this time to just sign on. I think I would like some guidance from healthcare entities in this community that know a lot more about what the impact of this cut is than I do.
And Alderman McClure.
I would like to take a moment to read this document out loud for the record, for Peg TV, for the folks at home, because I feel that we are putting them at a significant disadvantage by not reading the document aloud prior to the discussion we are about to have on it.
If you would like to read it, you certainly may.
Thank you. I'll wait for Peg TV to find where my face is, so, thank you. Resolution regarding proposed federal Medicaid funding cuts and Vermont's healthcare crisis. Whereas the budget bill that became law on July 4th, 2025, will likely lead to over 10 years, lead over 10 years to an estimated reduction in federal funding of more than $1 trillion for Medicaid, $490 billion for Medicare, $186 billion for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as SNAP, and a reduction of provider taxes used by Vermont to fund the Medicaid program, all of which will result in a loss of coverage and assistance for approximately 45,000 Vermonters, and a loss of income to clinics, mental health facilities, and hospitals across the state of Vermont that will exceed $2 billion. And whereas Vermont's healthcare system is already fragile, with the former chair of the Green Mountain Care Board acknowledging that health insurance premium rates are not affordable, and whereas approximately 187,800 Vermonters under the age of 65, myself included, and 34,900 over the age of 65, more than 1 in 3 Vermonters cannot afford to pay health insurance costs not covered by insurance. Whereas approximately 60,000 Vermonters carry a combined total of more than $100 million in already sustained hospital budgets, designated mental health agencies, primary care clinics, private insurers, and private insurers, leading to increased premiums for individuals, school systems, and other employers. And whereas rural hospitals in Vermont rely heavily on Medicaid payments due to the demographics and populations that they serve, with four rural hospitals already at risk of closing. Whereas the mandated Medicaid cuts would force rural hospitals to reduce services, limit hours, or close, particularly affecting obstetric care and leading to staffing shortages. And whereas healthcare is a significant employer and economic driver in Vermont, and reductions in healthcare funding would lead to job losses and decreased economic activity. And whereas the mandated Medicaid cuts will reduce access to care, including Medicaid-supported transportation essential to healthcare, particularly in rural areas, and lead to increases in health insurance premiums, which are already unaffordable for many individuals, school systems, and businesses in Vermont. And whereas the mandated Medicaid cuts will also have a negative impact on local economies by causing job losses in the healthcare sector and related industries, while also reducing business profitability. And whereas the mandated Medicaid cuts will impact mental health and substance use disorder services, which are overwhelmingly financed by Medicaid. And whereas proposed federal funding to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, known as Three Squares Vermont in the state of Vermont, threaten to eliminate food assistance for as many as 13,000 Vermonters, which would significantly increase food insecurity across the state, harm local economies that rely on these federal dollars, and lead to additional health problems and costs. Now therefore be it resolved that the, in this case, Board of Aldermen of Rutland City, expresses its grave concern about the devastating impact of proposed Medicaid cuts would have on the health of Vermonters, the viability of Vermont's healthcare system, and the economic vitality of Rutland City and Rutland County. It urges the Vermont General Assembly to pass emergency legislation that will help protect Vermont's healthcare assembly, or healthcare system, and our community from the devastation that they will likely experience when healthcare and SNAP funding are reduced by the amount presently set forth in the budget law. Call upon Vermont's congressional delegation to build coalitions across the aisle with senators and representatives to adopt legislation in order to protect Medicaid, SNAP, and Medicare funding. Direct the town clerk to send a copy of this resolution to Vermont's congressional delegation, the governor of Vermont, and the leadership and of our elected representatives in the Vermont General Assembly, and urge Vermont select boards to adopt similar resolutions. There is not a single item in this document that I can find myself to disagree with, and I would be hard-pressed to look around this room and find anyone else who would. I feel that we are putting the citizens of our community and the citizens of the state of Vermont at a significant disadvantage by not standing up for what is right and protecting their right to healthcare and to food. Full stop. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Before we get too, too much further, I want to get, see if we're going to have a motion. Alderman, what come, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I guess I just got to make the board aware. As much as I would like to speak to this as a CLO of a healthcare entity, or a board member of CHICHER, board member of Recovery House, I have to recuse myself. Too likely I have a direct, indirect potential impact based on any way this can go. Clearly an appearance of a conflict of interest, to say the very least. I would like to share, I don't think it's commenting on this, but probably worth the board's time to potentially solicit feedback from organizations such as CHICHER, Rutland Regional, just to get a sense perhaps of maybe how they're already choosing to approach this, and advocacy they're taking, just to make sure, is the body that you would be behaving in concert with what they're attempting to do? And I will bow out completely at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Alderman Donahue.
Yeah, so just looking at the language in the resolution, I don't think it would encumber the city in any way to support this. It's simply expressing concern and, you know, urging other entities to do things to prevent these cuts, or sort of, so I would make a motion to adopt this resolution and authorize the board president to sign.
Second.
Okay, I think we might need a motion to suspend the rules, to take it up.
Very good, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Take the matter up tonight.
Okay, so the motion has been made to suspend the rules and take the issue up tonight. It's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay.
Could we call for a roll call vote?
So the chair was in doubt. All those in favor, could you please raise your hand? Takes a three-quarters vote to suspend the rules. There's three yeses, motion fails. So what's your pleasure? Would you like to do anything else with this? The only other option would be to refer.
I'd like to make a motion to refer to community and economic development, to have a broad discussion with members of the community who feel that they may be impacted, and would like to see their elected representatives have a discussion on this document.
So a motion is to refer the document to community and economic development.
That is correct, for community and public discussion. And I would also like to add into my motion, is there a way that we can formally warn this in the Herald as well, in the same way we would a public hearing?
We can do that, but there's like a cost. It's like about $300.
Noted, okay. I will remove that, but encourage my fellow board members to utilize social media to spread the word to their constituents that this is something that we apparently have to take under consideration in a meeting to get discussed.
Okay, so I'm going to need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to refer. Any further debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Could I get a roll call vote for that as well, please?
Okay, again, a motion to refer. I can get you a roll call, I just, excuse me?
Okay.
You're okay? So a roll call has been requested, so.
That has to be requested first, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
Has to be requested first. So, Mr. Chairman?
If the chair's in doubt, you ask for a second.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, I believe this originated with the mayor. There was a contact, a physician to the mayor. And I think, I think Alderman Wickham makes a good point. He's in the business. This isn't, this isn't us saying, oh, we don't want you to have Medicaid benefits, contrary to statements. This is us saying, we don't have the education or the control, this is not a local issue, over this. So I'd like to refer this back to the mayor, to maybe have a discussion with Judy Fox at Rutland Regional Medical Center, or whatever entity you choose to reach out to, to see what impact it is on them. Is there anything that they're putting into play? And would this be a supportive document for them?
Okay, so we're getting multiple referrals on the floor, and the chair is getting a little confused, so the mayor would like to speak, so I'm going to allow him.
Thanks. So just to be clear, this is something that actually came to me from a constituent, and they wanted us to discuss this as a whole. And actually, I think this, it's good to have the discussion here on the floor. And actually, I think this, it's good to have the discussion here on the floor. I am happy to reach out and have those conversations and bring that back to the board, but having it in committee could possibly, could possibly ease that discussion once I get that information, so. Thank you.
Okay, so, yes, Alderman Mcclair.
Thank you. I would just like to make a point to a previous statement by another board member. This board has a history of voting on things symbolically, be it tax rates for education, be it other resolutions that have come before us to address matters on a federal scale. So I just strongly encourage my fellow board members to not let the mindset that we are a small town, we can't do anything, this isn't our business, we are local government, we are the first line of communication to federal government for our constituents, and to not take on the responsibility to remain informed on issues this large is reckless and irresponsible. So, thank you.
Okay, so, you're welcome. So we had a motion on the floor to refer back to charter and ordinance, and the chair was in, in doubt.
It was.
I'm sorry, am I confused?
It was community and economic development.
Community and economic development. Well, thank you very much. Community and economic development. And the chair was unsure of the vote. So all those in favor, could you please raise your hand? Three. And those opposed? Motion fails. Okay, so is there any other motion?
The motion I made was to refer back to the mayor.
So there's a motion now to refer back to the mayor, and it's been seconded. Any debate on that?
Alderman Gillum. Is, I, I agree with most of these things in here, but I don't know who the author is, number one, and I really do think we need, as Alderman Davis says, we need to reach out to our local medical people, who are the experts in this field, because I'm not. And I would like to hear their hardships, or if we're gonna do something here that might make it harder for them, or might make it easier. But I can't vote on something with not enough information. So I think sending it back to the mayor is a good idea. Sit down with the CEO with the hospital and find out their side of the story, so we can come up with something that we agree upon to move forward.
Thank you. Alderman Woman Mcclair.
Just to answer Alderman Gillum's question, this is in the signature of the email that we received, but this was sent by Jack Mayer, M.D., M.P.H. So he is a pediatrician doctor, so.
Okay, so the motion is to refer back to the mayor. It's been seconded. Seeing no further debate. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Chair's still unsure. All those in favor of sending this back to the mayor, could you please raise your hand? One, two, three, four. Four yes, could you, and against? One, two, three, four. Four yes, it needs six to refer, so the motion fails.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, motion is to adjourn, and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Or adjourn.